Calling the Public Works Committee to order. Took the world call. World call, please.
Alderman Arrow Woods.
Here.
Alderman Carielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Sizarski. Alderman Ames. Alderman Ames. They have said. Alderman Artie Woods.
Here.
Alderman Catalino.
Here.
Here.
Okay, make a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four for the Public Works Committee. Any questions, comments?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Report and recommendation. Rear yard drainage program revisions. Alan, I suppose you're going to talk on this?
I will, thank you Chairman. So at the CIP meeting, it was asked that we revisit this program in an attempt to get some more participation. So I conducted a survey of some of the surrounding communities that have a similar program. As far as eligibility requirements, ours were among the most lenient. Now, basically, we've gotten rid of the seventy-two hour standing water requirement, so it's it's open to anybody that's taking, I'm taking a drainage project on their private property. As far as reimbursements, most of the communities range from three to five thousand. Some went as high as ten thousand, some had no limit and just got approval from their their city board. Most of the reimbursements were for fifty percent of the project cost. One community was for the entire project. I'll note that many of the communities had the same issues with, you know, people getting projects designed, applying, and not ultimately going through with the project because it was too cost prohibitive for them. So you'll see on the right side there is kind of a breakdown of our participation since the program was implemented back in fiscal year twenty twenty. In average, we're getting about ten applications a year, maybe we'll go through about four projects to completion, and the projects average about twenty-two hundred in reimbursement costs, that's the city's share. And we're currently budgeting twelve thousand dollars in the CIP each year for the program. So we're looking for a recommendation tonight on the changes that the committee would like to see to the program.
Mayor, please.
Alan, you just said we get ten applications a year, so are the other ones either walking away because it's too cost prohibitive or they didn't qualify? Just curious.
It's almost always that they'll get a project design, they'll get quotes, and then it's just too cost prohibitive for them to continue even with the city's contribution.
Continue.
So, I'm sure somebody has said, well, you know what, you're only giving me three thousand, but it's going to cost me twelve, or it's going to cost me ten, or something. What are you hearing? Just...
Yeah, early on, most of the actual drainage projects where you're implementing an underground drainage system, those were in the twelve to fifteen thousand dollar range, and those are very cost prohibitive, obviously, especially when you're only getting three thousand dollars back from the city. Lately, we've seen more just sump pump connections since we've allowed that under the program, and those are the smaller fifteen hundred, the twenty-five hundred dollar range projects. A lot more of those have a higher success rate of going through. But even, you know, even a six thousand dollar project, not a lot of people have three thousand dollars to come up out of pocket for a drainage project on their property, so... And one thing I know, I'm sorry, Chairman, if I could. One thing I noticed among the communities, regardless of the participation levels, even those with the, that had no limit on the city's contribution, those actually had the lowest participation rate. Some hadn't completed projects in the last two years. The cities that had no limit on their participation.
Mayor, go ahead.
So, when we started this, I don't think all these communities had this, right? I mean, I felt like, I think they copied what we had.
Right.
Right?
I know my task had theirs in place when we implemented ours, ours was largely based on their program.
Oh, really?
But I don't think, yeah, nearly this many had had a program like this.
Okay.
Alderman Catalino.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to raise it up to seventy-five hundred to mirror the Benson bill. And also, the, so we're eliminating the pond in, the standing water?
We did that under the amendments we made last June.
Okay.
So now it's open to any resident that has, you know, ponding water or saturation on their property.
That's my motion.
I'll second the motion. Mayor?
So, seventy-five, is that still a fifty percent share, or? Right?
Yep.
Because, so raise it from three thousand to seventy-five hundred is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure I understood what you're saying.
Alderman Artie Woods.
Thank you. I appreciate the motion, and I think we are, in my short time up here, I've dealt with so many complaints on our few blocks with the backyard flooding. I still don't think seventy-five hundred dollars is going to do anything, because if the projects get quoted at ten to fifteen grand, if residents don't have three grand to spend, I don't think they're going to have five, you know what I mean? I just don't see it, so... That's just my comment.
Alderman Arkwoods.
Thank you. So first, Villa Parks had the program for a while, Lombard's had the program for a while, and Downers Grove. Those I know of, because I've worked with them on other, on other projects. And, so part of this is an issue of somebody just having a little puddle in the back of their yard, and part of this is an issue of structural issues with drainage on entire blocks, where over the course of years, things magically happen that create these problems, which then pushes the problem down to their neighbors. So I would agree, today, to get rid of those, you're easily in the fifteen thousand dollar category, so if we're really, truly trying to help somebody, there's probably a model in here somewhere between the two. But also, I'll back up in a minute, I wanted to address the issue where people come forward magically that don't continue on. I think where they, where the program allows, or causes the resident to put up money upfront to get this done, so we're not doing engineering and creating the thing and then going through it and finding out the price, say, is seventeen thousand, and they would have to pay half or whatever the number is, and then it falls through, we spend all the money on engineering. I think, I think in here, somebody, you, there were deposits, who is it, Darian? Where they put up a thousand or multi?
Yeah, there's, there's application fees. Darian, you were right, and then Warrenville.
Yeah.
And they, I spoke to those two directors directly, and they had said that they felt that the application fee was actually a deterrent for people even applying for the program. Those are two communities that didn't have any projects completed within the past two years.
Right. But, so to follow on that, though, if you truly have an issue, and a thousand dollars is the entry point, right? Essentially, you're paying for the engineering and that, and I believe that they pay a bigger share of, of the project. I think that would, one, eliminate people from doing frivolous things, because they'd have to put up whatever the number is we come up with, five hundred, a thousand, fifteen hundred. But then, we, we do the lion's share of the project. I mean, what would you say that the average is, twelve thousand dollars? Alan, I mean, from all the ones that you've seen?
Yeah, it depends heavily on the project type and, you know, the length that they have to get the sewer out to the street, but yeah, ten to, ten to twelve thousand would be average.
So if we, if we set something up where they, you had to put up a thousand or two thousand dollars, and then we paid up to seventy-five hundred or ten thousand after that, and then the balance or some kind of split, I think is a, a fairer or more equitable job, is when I was looking, I didn't have time to, like, add them together and try to put one together, but that's my thought process on it. You'll, the putting up money or the deposit eliminates frivolous people calling and just going, I have a little pond in the corner of my lot that really doesn't bother anybody, versus people that have an issue because all the water backs up in the backyards on entire blocks. And maybe that one or two drains on that whole block solves the problem for everybody on the block, too. That's why I'm looking at it and going, maybe we chip in a little more money. I don't know off the top of my head what that number would be, but if we, if we cause them thinking it through, and everybody else in common, if they had, you had to put a deposit down of a, not refundable, of course, a thousand dollars, which would cover the engineering or twelve hundred, whatever we come up with, and then the city would pay the first seventy-five hundred or eight thousand of the project, if so, if the project was fifteen thousand, right, do the math, we put up, or one thousand, and then the city pays eight, so what's that leave you, four, five thousand on a big job?
Yeah, Darian had a similar kind of, where the resident would pay a deductible of a thousand, and then the city would cover five thousand or ten thousand after that, and then anything above that, six thousand, then the resident would be responsible for.
So I feel that's a fair program, whatever.
Yeah, couple comments. I kind of agree with Director Lang. I mean, I think if we had a deposit, we would be discouraging people from applying. And I know Alderman Woods said, you know, frivolous, you know, projects, I mean, of the ten that we normally get, I mean, most of them, the reason they didn't do it was because of the cost, correct?
But this would solve both those problems.
Yeah, my concern is any amount of initial application fee is going to deter a majority of people, but you're right, those that are truly serious and truly have the money to spend on a project would probably go through with it.
So if I could comment, so for the people that have the money, if you have an issue, they're going to follow through. If you're telling, if we tell them, you put up a thousand dollars, we're going to figure out what this is, and the city's going to pay the first eight thousand of it, that's a better deal than telling them, we're not charging you anything, and when you find out it's fifteen thousand, we'll give you two thousand. I mean, those are like a million miles apart. So I'm not, when I say friv, maybe that's the wrong word to use, frivolous, but really small issues, right? We know that you have to have skin in the game, and what I'm trying to do is avoid the city going out and looking at everything and engineering everything, and then figuring out the price, and then everybody walking away. You know, this will cause you to think a little bit. If there's, I'm open to other issues, I'm just trying to make it equitable for the people that it's not just a three thousand dollar, which we know isn't going to solve the bigger problems.
I mean, I personally would lean towards doing like a seventy-five hundred dollars and max out of pocket, that the city would chip in and not having a deductible, but... Alderman Messina?
Kind of counterintuitive, right? Like, we, what do we want to do? Do we want to have more people, help more people, or help fewer people get the job done, right? The sad reality is probably, some of these quotes, they may come out of left field, right? You just don't know. So I mean, I personally would, I wouldn't feel comfortable insisting on a thousand dollars for somebody, I mean, I even took care, I even did the program, right? And it's like, I wouldn't put up a thousand unless there was a caveat of like, you need to do X, Y, and Z, and you'll get it back, but if I'm going to, I might as well go put it on a roulette table. If I don't know, I mean, most of these people don't know, they need guidance. They're calling us, usually, I would say ninety-five percent of the people that apply, probably, at least in my ward, I would say a hundred percent of them come to us first, and they just don't know where to start, right? So for them, it kind of helps us as a buffer to say, we hear you. We also, if you remember, we started this because of the Comet thing, where they were, the utility companies would say, you cannot come back here, or we will sue you, right? So like, this is our way to tell you, we hear you, we can't really do much, here's a, I thought that was the intent initially, like, this is our way to help offset the fact that utility companies wouldn't let you go back on there. So, for me personally, or for us personally, I think it's, it's helped those, where we've had those people that were very angry, it's like, we did our part, the city came out, we went above and beyond, and we did the engineering, if you decide not to do it, none of those people have ever come back and barked at us. I mean, so that was, at least for us, that's what it's worked in our ward, it's helped us fix issues. Sorry.
Director Lang?
Not advocating for or against an application fee, but if we were to implement one, I would recommend maybe keeping it around two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that would cover the initial engineer survey that's conducted, and, you know, maybe not be too cost prohibitive for some people who are trying to get the smaller projects done, like sump pump connections, I mean, if you put a thousand dollars down, that's probably fifty percent of the project cost, so they may not want to put that up front, but just a thought.
Alderman Sizarski?
Yeah, this is Director Lang. How many of these rear yard drainage programs can be filtered to the front yard, to the front pipes at all? Any?
I don't have a percentage for you. Our goal on most projects is to have them directly connect to the city sewer, obviously that's not always possible, but in the event that a city sewer is not present, you know, we look for other projects, like maybe a dry well or a rain garden or something like that.
So my second question was, you couldn't answer that, so is there city sewer in the front street on most of these properties?
Again, I don't have a percentage of how many streets have.
And give them the same kind of program we did for people who hook up from well to city, it's a lot cheaper to go to the front than it is to keep up the maintenance at the back, because everybody else's properties are all uneven.
Right.
For some reason, I don't know how it happened, but everybody's elevations are all different in their backyard. It floods, you flood me out, I flood you out, vice versa.
Yeah, I would say a majority of properties have access to a storm sewer within two-hundred feet of their property. Obviously, in Ward Two and some parts of Ward One, they got rural cross-sections.
Ward O two?
Ward Four Two, so that's not always possible, so we have to look for other project types.
So would it be, sorry, so would it be cheaper to see if we can't find a reason to, find a way to pump it to the front, to the city storm sewer, instead of keep doing this backyard drainage? It seems to be costing a lot more money.
Yeah, that's usually the goal, is to get it to the front yard, either to a swale or to the city storm sewer, but those are pretty long runs, you're digging up, you know, landscaping, and sometimes have to cross a driveway or a sidewalk, so the cost can escalate from there.
You're digging up my whole backyard, and I don't know if that's ever going to work. So if we put it to the city sewer, or city sanitary, or the city's, uh, storm sewer, to me, that'd be a much better project. I would be willing to give more money to that than keep putting bad money after bad money.
Mayor?
I think Artie was before me.
Artie Woods?
Yeah. Uh, just a question for Alan, in the communities you reached out to, did anyone have different stipulations on the sump pump program versus the actual drain? I know you said the sump pump program's significantly cheaper, so?
Yes.
Do we consider an option where we have different standards, a different approach of a lower cost for the sump pump connection versus the rear yard drainage?
Uh, some of them didn't allow sump pump connection to be covered under the program, we actually just implemented that last June. But as far as the ones that did allow sump pumps, I didn't notice any type of different requirement or eligibility requirement or participation levels for those.
Just a quick follow-up. In the last couple of years, I mean, I've run into the exact number of the few that we've done every year, are most of them just the sump pump, or are most of them full-blown projects?
No, I would say most of them are underground drainage projects. Sump pumps, I think we've only been doing them the last couple of years, and we've gotten a handful of those, but...
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, regarding the sewers, so, I know, we talked about it, I think we're trying to correct that, but like, we redid Alderman Catalino's block, and at the far west end, like, two or three houses from the corner, those people can't hook up, and they've got pipes running out across their lawn, the sidewalks get all iced up and stuff, they have no, and I know we're trying to correct that, so not everywhere in town do we have sewers going away throughout the block. But I'm looking at the eligible, right, criteria. Nuisance flooding, including standing water saturation, overland flooding that causes direct damage to the house or structure, right? You want to avoid that kind of stuff, it all makes sense. Multiple residential homeowner, homeowner impact. So, are we changing, I'm just curious, are we still leaving, we got rid of the seventy-two hours, because that was when it becomes a health issue. I saw Bensonville's at forty-eight hours, some are seventy-two up there, some don't have anything. I just, you know, because, over the years, I've heard stuff. You know, it rained two inches, and the next day the sun is out, the water's gone, yeah, but my grass is wet, I don't like it. I just want to make sure that that's not what we're paying for, right? We're helping people that actually need help, or, the sump pumps make sense, because in Ward Three, they got a disaster, they got a lot of blocks over there that, you know, they made, the developer put in their own, and I think it's like a four-inch pipe or something for their storm water in the back. A three-inch. Three-inch? Which is ridiculous, because it's, neighborhood's what, forty years old, fifty years old, those pipes are cracking, and so what people are doing, they're naturally adding landscape, bushes and stuff, and basically, like Alderman Sizarski just said, you're flooding the next guy, and Alderman Woods mentioned. Want to correct the problem, and if we can get all those homes hooked up to the front, that's great, that's the cheaper route, that sounds like what you're saying. The question is, what do we want to do? I just want to make sure we're not changing the criteria, because if somebody's going to tell me, my grass is wet, you know, well, we can go to my house right now, my backyard, give me, you know, I'll, I'm already hooked up to the front. It's a swale back there, so, you know, I don't, I don't want to get ridiculous, that's all I'm saying.
We removed the seventy-two hour standing water requirement, because it was kind of arbitrary and difficult to prove, if somebody has water that are sixty-eight hours or seventy-two.
And that was brought up because at seventy-two hours, that's when the mosquito problems start.
Right.
So that's where that number came from. But, we got rid of it already, so...
Right.
Okay.
Alderman Woods has been patiently waiting. Alderman Woods?
Thank you. To address a couple of those concerns, one, all these programs, all the people that you talk to, all the, I've talked to a couple of them, I've dealt with a couple of the villages, none of them have a ton of people in these programs. So that, that I know. The other thing I know is there's a lot of people in all the wards that have issues with water.
Right.
In the backyard, right? And so, to Alderman Messina and Jacob's point, I didn't think that he'd be okay with a lower number, but I'm okay with a two-dollar, or two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee, and the city paying, let's say, the first ten thousand dollars. Their effect, if the motion earned a second or a decree?
We didn't get a second, did we get a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Alderman Catalino.
Before I agree, so this is also hooking up the sump pump, hooking it up to a storm sewer, if it's available to be hooked up to, correct?
Correct, that is an eligible project type.
Okay. I agree.
I would agree, too. The only thing we have to consider here is, if we do do that, we were only budgeting, what was it, twenty?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, and we'd have to probably up that to like thirty thousand, so we could at least have three residents or three homeowners participate.
Then that's great, up the budget, and then first come, first served?
Yeah, maybe thirty thousand dollars, Alderman Catalino, I mean...
I agree.
That'd be, help three residents a year.
Maybe it won't cost that much to hook up sump pumps to the existing sewer, so...
Yeah. Alderman Sizarski?
Yeah, Director, Director Lang, so, I know that you're saying there's only three people right now. What happens if there's twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty people? Is the city water area going to be able to hold all that? I mean, I know we have room to add on. Well, is it sufficient enough?
Yeah, there's no, no real capacity concerns at the moment, especially only doing four projects a year.
But I'm saying, if it goes, exceeds that, if people see this, and all of a sudden...
Yeah, if there's a regional issue where everybody on a single block was planning on connecting their downspouts and sump pumps.
Yeah.
Then we'd probably have to do an expanded engineering study of that area and make sure the sewers could handle the additional.
I do have residents calling me, asking if they can hook their downspouts to the sewer pond, to storm sewers, and I say, you're going to call the city. What, you get twenty, thirty people all of a sudden to see tonight, oh wait, they're going to do that? Well, I want to do that. My, my, my house is already hooked up, my downspout's in the front, go right to the storm sewer, my sump pump moves there. It's nice. If you get twenty more people, what does that add to the inflow of the water treatment line? Are you able to cap, capacitate that?
So we'd have to look at that on a case-by-case basis.
Alderman Catalino?
So we're talking about sump pumps, we're not talking about downspouts.
Correct.
Yeah, because, you know, the, the sump pumps are pumping, like, to your point, Mayor, they're pumping on the sidewalks, and it's causing, in the wintertime, it's causing icing, in the summertime, it's causing algae, so that's more important at this point, to get those tapped into the city sewer, storm sewer.
Mayor?
Just want to make sure I understood this motion and amended motion. So it's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars application fee, and then the city's going to put out ten grand to the first person?
First ten.
First ten thousand.
First ten thousand.
If the job comes out to be thirty-five hundred, the guy pays an application fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and the city pays the...
So now, it's not a, it's not a cost share anymore?
It's a cost share after ten thousand.
Yeah, after ten thousand.
The jobs are getting fifteen to twenty thousand, at that point, it becomes, the bigger jobs become a fifty-fifty, the smaller jobs become a, we're just going to take care of it.
Sounds like I should have became a plumber.
That's how my sewer gets.
You're all in love.
Yeah?
You're all in love.
City manager, Murmice?
So if they do the two-fifty deposit, and then we do the first ten, if the project is, let's say, fifteen, do they do twenty-five hundred, and we do an additional twenty-five hundred, or do they do in excess of ten?
They do anything after the ten.
Yeah, the way the motion was, they...
So if it's a twenty thousand dollar job, they do ten, if it's a twenty-five, they do fifteen, if it's eleven, they do a thousand.
So we'll do up to ten thousand dollars?
There's no cost share anymore on the first ten thousand.
Correct.
Correct.
That would be the...
That's...
Better language, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I agreed to, right, Tony?
Yes.
Alderman Artie Woods?
For these other communities, how did they prioritize who gets to go first? First come, first served, or extreme situations first, or...
Yeah, some of them were prioritized mainly on extreme situations, most of them were just like us, they only get a few applications a year, and they're within the budget, so they do all of them. If we're upping the limits, we might have to discuss, you know, prioritizing projects if we get numerous applications, but we can revisit that later on down the road if we need to. I did have a question, because right now, the program's set up as a reimbursement, the applicant has to pay the contractor in full, and then the city reimburses them, would we stick with that structure? Or would we be paying the contractor directly from the city?
I would, this would be one of the times when I would say, let's talk to the attorney a little bit, but if the guy, I guess my first thought is, if they, if the argument before was that the resident doesn't have three thousand or four thousand to do the job, he's not going to have ten thousand to give to the contractor, you know, and wait thirty or sixty days for the city to pay him back, so we'd have to probably develop something, language or form-wise, that the city attorney could better speak to.
Might need a couple of weeks.
We will, yeah, we'll definitely confer with the city attorney.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. Mr. Murmice?
One concern, so let's say there's a block, like we talked about, that has flooding issues, and then ten people on the block apply, a hundred thousand dollars is not small to the budget, so how, would we cap this at a certain... Hundred thousand dollars is not small to the budget, so how, would we cap this at a certain amount, because right now?
Well, we're only, okay, so, the question, A, we're only going to do so many a year, right, first come, first served? But I think speaking to the block issue, at least my thought is that that water's moving somewhere. It isn't like that whole lot's completely level and holding water equally, it's moving. So doing two houses might alleviate the issue for ten or fifteen houses, right? If water's running downhill to the last guy on the block or the, running to the center of the block and that's the low spot. Now, I can think of on Cedar, there's a couple of shoes, there's, right, it runs to one section. So by doing one house, you're probably eliminating issues on the other two properties. So I would, I would think that's less an issue.
Alder, Alderman Messina?
In theory, maybe, but not always is the source of the problem going to be the one coming forward to fix it. It's usually it's the people that get it downstream, like, what the hell, where is this coming from? So that, that's kind of my concern with that. I mean, it goes back to the intent of this, right? Like, did we want to help a lot of people? That's what I thought the intent was when we did this. We're kind of, in my opinion, flipping it and saying, we're going to help a select few. I mean, we're going to be equitable, but.
We're not saying that at all. We're only limited by the amount we want to put up. You want to put up.
Well, we're saying be equitable, equitable, I mean, how are we going to?
One at a time, please.
If we're going to be equitable, right? I mean, if it's two-fifty, I still think you're going to price people out at two-fifty, where people may not want to spend that money, you know? I don't, that's just my thought. I'm just wanting.
The program to begin with, that they weren't going to spend two-fifty.
Maybe not, but I, like I said, I think part of, part of the program is people coming to us to say, hey, we have this issue and our default constantly, as Pat knows, on Cedar is constantly, sorry, the utility companies won't let us go back there, good luck, see us in twenty years. And so, this allowed a path to like, say, this is what's going on. This is what's going to cost you, we're not footing the whole bill, but at least these people understood, like, we're willing to help them somewhat and then you got to take ownership yourself of fixing the problem.
And the other thing I would, the other thing I would say is, I mean, how many times have we had a whole block come apply for this or ah, I mean, have we ever had that situation? We've never had that situation. Number two is we're still going to have the people that are only, we're only giving them two or $3,000 because you're still going to have the people that, you know, are willing to, so we're, so we're still going to be helping those people as well. They're still going to apply as well. And then once, the, once we hit the budget, I mean, maybe we up the budget to fifty instead of thirty, I mean.
It's twelve. It's twelve.
Well, well, yeah, but we said we're upping it to thirty thousand.
I didn't hear no motion for that.
That was, that's, was the motion.
Oh, did you make?
Yeah, that was the amended motion, was that we're changing it to thirty thousand.
Did you, oh, you heard it? Okay, I missed it.
Got to get the hearing aids in, Mayor.
All right.
Don't make fun of me.
Go ahead.
Questions for clarification? So the $10,000, that's per project, regardless of how many properties participate, right? If multiple properties band together for one project that is going to benefit each of them, then this city would contribute the first ten thousand and then the residents would share any cost over that? Or are we doing $10,000 per property?
Well, again, you had said, you had said that we usually don't have multiple people from a street come in, so.
Not the whole street, but we have had multiple properties, neighbors join together on a single project and the way the program is written, as of now, each of those properties is eligible for 50% of their share, up to three thousand.
I personally would say that each property is eligible.
Yeah.
I don't think that there's, I, and I know what you're trying to safeguard against, I just don't think that there's enough of those situations that it's going to hurt us. And again, the point that was brought up, if we're here to help people, let's have the lowest number of limiting factors that we can have.
Sure, yeah.
Just want to make sure I understand.
I would agree with that.
Then if we are, is the motion to increase the budget to thirty thousand, we're capping it at that and we're not allowing any participation past that point?
I would say at that point, I mean, people would have to come to the council, you know, I mean, if, at that point, the council would have to make a decision. Or have to wait for the following year. And we've done that before with other programs where we set, I think, with the animal trapping, didn't we do that one time? Where, we spent the, yeah, with the skunk removal, I think we had hit the limit and we actually upped the, you know, so many people were coming forward, so we did change it in midstream. So we could always change it, Mayor?
Jeff, you probably already texted Brad to change the, because the budget hearing, I think, is next week or, right?
Yeah, I think it would be like a mid-year budget amendment or something after the fact. I don't think we're going to change the presented budget.
Okay, just, so, so I know we, I remember the two residents and they were screaming, you were only, you were only going to give them, the city was only going to do three thousand because they were kind of working together, right? And the city was only going to give them three thousand. And then, I know the attorney got involved and that's when you guys said, okay, yeah, because it's two single, it's not a, they weren't like a town home with four units, they were two single-family homes. Then, I think that's, that's where Pat came up with the three thousand each. I remember that one. And, you know, then we had a town home, but even them, I think we did a little something extra also, but, so this is, and I, I think you'll get more people because you're basically, hey, city's going to give you ten grand.
Up to ten grand, the first ten grand.
Right, but again, I'm just, what is, who's going to look at the criteria and tell me, yeah, they, they qualify? I mean, it's a little vague, so I'm just, because I know we're going to get into that discussion.
Well, I.
What's a nuisance? I mean, listen, if they're getting water to their house, it's causing a structure problem, that's an easy one. What's a nuisance in the backyard? I can hear the, I can hear, I'm just, you know.
But, I mean, I think up until now, Director Lang, correct me if I'm wrong, if we had any issues where.
But, no, but we were never paying the first ten thousand before either.
Right, right, this is different now. I mean, it's, if we're still a cost share here on the ten grand, you know, we were paying 50% up to ten thousand, now you're talking about something different.
Right, the thought, the thought process was you wouldn't undertake a project on your property if you really had an issue, so.
Right.
But now, it's much easier to get the project funded.
Again, I'm just, what is going to be considered the nuisance? It's, I, I can hear those arguments already, I'm going to have people standing right there yelling at us, but, because.
Alderman Sizmarski?
So how do you explain to my residents that you came to get rid of their wells and cap their wells? And I believe City Mayor Mermis can back me, was it sixty-five hundred we were giving them? To hook up to the city well?
Top on, five thousand.
Five thousand? Now you're giving everyone else ten grand? That's not in my ward, to, to hook up to, to clean, clean up their backyard because it's wet?
It's two separate programs, I mean.
It is two separate, but they both drain the same way. One goes, the, the water goes right into the city well, right? It goes into the city, city sanitary or city sewer. Some pumps do the same thing, they're all hooking up. I mean, it's an awful lot of money when you're giving one and not to the other.
Alderman Art Woods?
First, two different things. Wells, and I, I get what you're saying, the disparity between six hundred or ten grand, but as time marches on, things get more expensive. It's a lot easier and usually less expensive than cap a well in your backyard than it is to dig up your whole yard from the backyard, auger across the sidewalk, the parkway, go through the street and across the street to tie into a sewer to solve an issue, right? So that's some of the things that we're talking about. Some of them are going to be easy. It might be twenty-five hundred, in which case, hallelujah, the resident paid two-fifty, got relief at, at twenty-five hundred. And so we don't try to spend the whole evening trying to solve every problem. We move forward with the project and we'll fix whatever issues come up with it. If we find out that everybody, the whole city applied for backyard drainage program, which I highly doubt, then we would have to make an adjustment. My experience and based on all these other communities and based on the history that we have here, it's not going to be that many people. So we might have to raise that money to seventy thousand or eighty thousand, but again, to Alderman Messina, if we're here to help the people, then that's why we're here, to help the people.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. Again, we could always change it, just like we did with the skunk program.
Alderman Catalano?
Are we still requiring pictures to be taken, like in the past? Some kind of documentation to show what the issue is?
Uh, no, I don't believe, since we got rid of the seventy-two hour standing water requirement, we haven't been doing that.
Alderman Woods?
So what's the, run me through the process quick. We send out our city engineer, he looks at the property.
Yeah, he gathers topographic data, get, speaks to the resident about where the issues are and then he makes recommendations for improvements.
And the resident probably does come out with pictures and show them, even though we might not use them as evidentiary towards doing this. We have a professional go out, the engineer looks at it, he gets the topo data from, I'm assuming, the county or stuff that he may have, look at it and goes, yes, this thing drains here or ponds, we can see that. I don't need to see the water to know that the water will stand there.
Correct.
Right, and move forward. So there is a criteria that they have to meet, right? If the engineer comes back and it's flat and goes, now there's one little spot, I know that you came out and the engineers came out on my block, a couple neighbors down complaining and I know that ultimately, we didn't do anything because the data didn't prove anything needed to be done. So I, I think we're covered with how we're handling it and we can readjust in six months or a year if we had to.
I would agree, based on the numbers from the other towns, I, I don't think we're going to have a, you're going to have twenty people in line waiting to apply, right? You know, I mean, and once we hit that budget number, if we still have a bunch of people apply, then we come back to council and look at it like we did the skunk program.
Mayor?
Mayor doesn't like the skunk program, I guess.
I meant in the skunk program at twenty-five or a thousand dollars is totally different than adding thirty thousand.
Just a decimal point.
It's not the same thing. It's, it goes back to the argument when we, when we were doing the snow program. Are you going to clean my gutters and do my windows?
Well, if I can follow up on that.
This is the quality of life, this is different, this is flooding. I understand.
Your follow-up?
The fair comparative would be the facade program, right? We upped it, I pushed up it, right?
Yeah, no.
Very robust and how many people do we have apply for it? Next to zero.
Yep, agreed.
Again, that, that's not, that's not what I'm, I'm just, the nuisance thing, right? Just make sure, I want it to become, you know, it's clear, cut and dry. I mean, you mentioned a few things, Alderman Woods, just now, right? Because for some people, they might just need a couple bags of dirt in the corner and it doesn't sit there anymore because it was, for some reason, it was a low spot there.
I'm assuming, again, I'm quoting a personal experience with neighbors on my block. They came out, they looked, nothing could be done, it was just that, it was a dirt, put a little dirt issue back there and it was solved. Now, did both of those neighbors like that answer?
No.
I'm here to tell you, they, they weren't, but they're, they're living with it.
And as Alderman Messina said, I, I don't think, the little nuisance issues that they're putting up $250 deposit, I don't think they're going to.
You're giving me ten grand. Well, we'll see if you, we'll see if you apply. Theory's viable.
Yep.
It just goes back, like I said, there's going to be a few people that come forward. Like, someone calls me, I'm not going to default and say, buy the program. I'm going to say, you really need to scope this out to really understand, is this worth your initial investment? Because if it's a tie-in, well, do you really want to do that? You know, probably not. I also think the other part, as I thought about it, is, and I don't know if you asked those folks, but I feel like the permit requirements, both the facade program and even with this, probably scares some people away. They just don't realize that it's going to be scrutinized, right?
Alderman Catalano?
So this is going to help, especially the residents. It's going to help the residents that have a backyard, as you can see in this picture, I don't know if you can see it because it's so far away.
I can't see it.
They have to fence in their backyard because the whole backyard is full of water. And they have a dog and they can't have their dog enjoy the backyard. This is what we're talking about, people to help people out, residents out like that, I mean. So we have a few of them in our yard, in our, in my ward, I'm sorry.
In your yard?
Yeah. No, I, I also have issues in my backyard, but I, I don't have all those dogs to worry about, so.
Okay, do we have any more questions? Okay, let's, let's do a roll call, please. Let's.
No, this, I, I'll tell you different.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames is absent. Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, replacement of public works equipment number five-eleven dash eleven F, backhoe loader and an amount not to exceed $153,996, that would be my motion.
We can't do that now, we have to fund the backyard.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames is absent. Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Items be considered at future meetings, engineering water tower, April 25th. Fiscal year twenty-five, solid purchase, to be discussed. Do we have any other items? Alderman Sizmarski?
Yeah, we had a couple of calls today, three, to be exact. Residents are calling in about coyotes. The chief's not here, apparently. Somebody called in.
The coyotes, because I was accustomed at the bank with the coyotes.
They, well, they called in, basically because of. Residents called in, basically because it was during the hours of eleven and two when kids are being dropped off from school and they're running or daylight time. And kids are very apprehensive of petting dogs and they don't know the difference between a dog and a coyote. So usually when coyotes are out during the day, they're mange, they're not coherent, they're supposed to be out at night. So I don't know, I know they're protected, but if there's anything we can do, I'd try and help because there was two or three are cited in Ward Four during the drop-off of kids.
I was told it's the mating season.
Yeah, they, they actually had something on the news the other day.
I don't mind mating season either, but this is kids.
No, I, I'm, I'm just offering information.
They did have this on the news the other night.
I know they're protected by the government, but there's.
And I think, wouldn't this be?
Called the city, when they called the city, there was no, they said they couldn't do anything. Well, there's got to be something to protect the kid.
They do that with the deers in Schaumburg, right?
We do that.
I guess, would this be the chief we'd have to talk to on this one?
Let me know, I'll do it.
Mr. Mermis?
I mean, typically coyotes, we've had this issue before when it's come up, they're not really a danger, but if it's something out of the norm, sure, we could look into it, I'll talk to the chief about that tomorrow.
They carry rabies and disease just like any other animal.
Maybe if you could put something in the manager's report after you talk to the chief?
Sure, sure.
Or a number to the DuPage County Animal Society, so they call them instead of getting a non-response to the Wooddale Police or.
Or issue weapons to the residents and we can go hunt them.
Give us a, give us a permit to do it?
Bounty, bounty program?
Yeah. I like it, we can make it a contest.
You could put it on there.
And the proceeds go to the backyard program.
Okay, anything else for future meetings? Make a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned.